Wasn't he with us?
He was, I thought.
I'll let her sit down.
Okay.
All right, we'll start off the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America with zero dollar forty spanners, one nation, under God, and to this world with limitations.
Thank you all for coming tonight. The fire access department, we do that cell phones with you. We ask them on silence so we don't get interrupted in the middle of things. And can we have a roll call?
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Russell LaForte.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Here.
Melanie Moore.
Yes.
Stephen Unhug.
Here.
Alan Reese.
Here.
Brett Baker.
Here.
Matthew Fetter.
Here.
And can we have a motion that the meeting was advertised as required?
Sub move.
In a second.
Second.
And roll call vote on that.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Russell LaForte.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Melanie Moore.
Yes.
And would that be actually the minutes from November's meeting? So we can prove them and waive the reading of those minutes?
Sub move.
In a second.
Second.
And roll call vote on that.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Russell LaForte.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Melanie Moore.
Yes.
And Steve, our whole business was canceled, so we will go right to new business, Steve?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, anybody here that's for good guys, gas station, Brian Ylonovich at 6054 Route 22, it's been withdrawn and will not be heard tonight. So if you're here for that, nothing is going to be said, it was withdrawn. That being said, we can go on to our two variances. We're going to break these down into several variances, A, B, and some requests, maybe multiple ones, but we're going to start with UMS properties on, this is considered 26 Iris Sediment Road. Area variance to revoke, sorry, request to be allowed to construct 12 silos that would reach 60 feet in height, which is 20 feet higher than the maximum of 40 feet that is allowed in an industrial district. There are also requests to be allowed to construct a 433,000 square foot warehouse facility that is 76 feet in height, which is 36 higher than the maximum 40 foot allowed in an industrial district. But we are going to break them down into a couple different ones and local ones, but Alan's going to go over the details over where this project is located first.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, in case anybody doesn't know exactly where Schluter is, they kind of own this whole block right here. So this is the car by road that comes around Pleasant Ridge Road. This is Iris Sediment Road here, 87 is out here, so we're, this is their whole complex. We're talking about this large parcel right down here. That's what's got a Iris Sediment Road address that actually runs right there. So you see the industrial zoning, that's pretty much Schluter, okay? So this is a blow up of that area, so this is large parcel right here. This is their little RV manufacturing that they just finished. They also had just have a reset parking lot that's across the road here. So this is basically right now, this has all been detreed. Got a little bit of sand pile out here, at least everybody recognizes that. This is kind of what they're proposing. This is a new facility for them. You saw over 400,000 square feet. There are some silos that set up over here, as those 12 we pointed out, and then of course the height of the building. I'll go through these kind of slides that the engineer has provided, but then we'll go back because I'm sure he's going to want to talk to about them. So basically same kind of layout there, he's just pointing out, here's some elevation views showing the heights of the building. This bottom right hand corner one, you can see these are the silos down here. And then what they did is they kind of showed up a view. This is what it looks like right now. And then the second picture would show the actual building in there. I think this line right up here is where the building looks like through the fixtures. There you go, now you can see the building, so you can see the darker color around here, building behind this particular house. So we got a few of those. Here's what it looks like now. Here's what it looks like once the building is there. I said I'll just zip through these, then Aaron can come back and talk about it if he wants to. This is that, it's one of the on-ramps to the highway, but it's on 22, just past where Iris Sediment Road connects to 22. There's what the building look when you're going down that way. This is the bridge on 22 that crosses over 87, so looking back at the tree line, you can see there's a little bit of the building popping through right here. Here's what it looks like today, when I went out and took a picture. So nothing there. Okay, Aaron, let me go back up to your start of yours. There you go, sir, all yours.
Thank you, Aaron Obvious, representing Schluter site, I have the corporate counsel, Steve Madonna here in the audience. Just a quick recap, Schluter has been working over the last several years to develop a new production facility here on lands that they own just south of their current campus. Now, the building is roughly 433,000 square feet. What you see in green on the display is the section of the building that would be 45 feet tall. The yellow is an area that would be 80 feet tall. The silos would be located in the northwest corner, kind of hard to see, but, so next slide, but the materials silos here in this corner. Really, the reasoning for the variance, the next slide, I think, or back one maybe. Nope, okay. Actually have copies here, but, I'm sorry. When Schluter is looking to, you know, build this production facility, really what it's for is to, the facility basically will produce the curdy board, which is the foam board that they sell as a product, and, you know, the entire production facility is basically assembly line, going from north to south on the west side of the building. And then in the southern portions, you have what they call secondary ops, where they take that product, they make shower niches and different, you know, components. With the high bay being the automated storage, where that's where they store, as the material comes out of production, it has to rest a little bit before it can be laminated with a waterproof membrane, so it's stored there. And then also, once the product is produced, it allows storage in that facility. It really is not a where, large warehouse facility, it's just that is the space that's necessary to operate the business. Meaning, if there is an interruption in the supply chain where we can't get a product for one to two weeks, we have to have enough raw material to keep production going. It really is, you see on the map I gave you, the key point is this kind of shaded area off the left hand side that kind of defines the left side. What that is, is an Army Corps of Engineers wetland. So when you look at the parcel, you know, we don't have the room to expand to a larger footprint, you know, to reduce the height of the building. So in order to produce the product, to have enough raw material to keep the facility running, and also in production, to keep the post-production products together, you know, we are limited, which leaves us the only option going up. So what Alan showed earlier is we had Saratoga Associates consultant put together the visual renderings as far as taking the model, placing it on the site, and looking at from points of public view. And really, as you look at it, you know, besides the south end of Whispering Pines, you know, the natural buffer along the interstate, the large wetlands to our west is not highly visible, but there will be points that is, you know, seen from the surrounding areas. Throughout Schluter's, you know, existence here at the campus, they have been before you several times for similar type variances. Those here are some of the prior variances. So if you go back and look at like in 2007, Schluter came before you for a variance for the office building, so if you look, you know, there exists the office building, you see it to be 46 feet high. Again, what we're proposing for the whole office area is 45, so very similar height to what you see there. When you look at SSF, which is the Tanner Building with the silos in the photo, they came before you in 2010, you see the variance that put the material silos there, again exceeding the 40 foot height limitation. Then you also have the finsett facility, so in 2015, the applicant came before you to enclose all the silos, and that's the taller portion of what you see there. And that variance was actually 88.5 feet, so eight and a half feet taller than what we're proposing. Yeah, so we've already had that height exceeded the current pools. And then again, 2016, when we built the bridge, we also got a variance by height there to exceed the 40 feet. So it's not uncommon, you know, in industrial zone, you have campuses receive very large variances. And then you look at other facilities in industrial zone that surrounds the town. A person is involved with solenopastics getting variance to exceed the 40 feet, upstone materials significantly joint aligned, so it's not uncommon for industrial activities to exceed that 40 foot limitation.
And you've gone through the FAA already.
Yeah, so we've actually kind of wrapped around, so we have submitted our application to the FAA. They've come back with a no hazards, so basically no hazards in our air article navigation. Copy of that certificate was given to the town. Also because of the size and scope of the project, it's a Type 1 action for Seeker. The plan board was lead agent, so the plan board back in December, had a special meeting where they review the seeker and determine the project to have no significant negative impacts. And that then clears the way, so you don't have to do your own seeker tonight, so you can continue with the application. In the photos, you know, obviously it's hard and plain with, you know, the colors to get them exactly right, but, you know, in the renderings that you see and that Alan had, you know, obviously the computer, it's not really, so without looking at white and brown, so if you look at, you know, this one, the color is a little more true, but really, if you look at the tower, the finsett plant and the high building, it's basically, you know, those are Schluter's branded colors as far as the light gray, the dark gray, the orange. So again, in front of you, it's all the same, we're not trying to, and there was this comment made by the plan board to possibly look at some other colors on the north end to help it hide a little better, you know, softer, about so much of the light gray, but maybe something darker. And we're definitely open to negotiating with the plan board in those discussions. Right, so I know it's, just to clarify, you know, some of the numbers, the silos, the proposed silos, there'll be 12 material silos, those would be up to 60 feet in height each. The building, as we look, the green portion of the building is 45 feet. With the yellow portion of the building, it's actually, it's 76 feet from finished floor, but because you have the loading docks on that side, we accounted for the extra four feet, and that's where we came up with the eight.
Because they drop down?
Correct. So it's, you just have, you know, so those numbers are correct in our record. To help soften, obviously, some of the aesthetic, we've been working with the plane department that, on the north side of the property, because although the property looks fairly flat, it's not 100% level, it does slope from north to south. So when we look at placing the building and balancing the cuts and fills, the building will be set down slightly below existing grade. And what that's done is allowed us to build the retaining wall on the north side, where we also have then a landscaping berm on top of that, and then vegetation and fencing on top of that. And what that does is it ensures that, really, from the properties to the north, there's roughly a 12 to 16 foot berm, vegetation, and fencing. And what that does is ensure that any trucks going around the north side, all headlights are fully blocked, and also provide additional sound dampening so any noises coming from the plane, et cetera, help soften that for me. We're working through those finite details with the plane department. We hope to submit later this month, or I don't get heard in front of them in February. So that's kind of, you know, the overview. I'm more than happy to expand or elaborate. Have any questions before we move on?
You've been in conversation with the fire department for, you know, all production needed, and it's so very clear, isn't it?
Yep, so because the, some of you may know, Schluter has recently put in their own fire pump, fire tank, that's to ensure that there's adequate water to extinguish a fire. The wordlet is provided in the record from Grand Fire Protection, where's our consultant engineer, that shows that the tank and pump system as a design can support this proposed building along with the campus. So the yellow portion, the taller portion, is basically the automated shuttle rack system. And fire code requires that not only do we have sprinklers at the top, but we actually have in rack sprinklers at a 20 foot increment all the way through the building. So it is well protected and complies with all of the requirements.
Anybody else have any comments, questions they'd like to have? Can I open up the public care portion of the meeting?
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, I guess, why are you doing that? When we did this meeting for Seeker, public care, and we limited it to public comments about four minutes, first time seemed to work well, so I'm going to recommend you do something along those lines.
All right, anybody like to speak to this matter? Step up to the mic, state your name and address, and give us your comments.
I'm going to be here more than four or five minutes, and I shouldn't be allowed to have more time than four or five minutes. I think that's kind of, well?
Five minutes is quite a long time.
Okay, then I'll address if we go. My first issue is, back in March 5th of 2021?
Name and address, please.
My name is Carson Arnold. I live at 14 Whispering Pine Grove, this is adjacent to the office property.
Okay.
My great concern is, my one issue that I have is, back in March 5th of 2021, in the town of Plattsburgh in 2021, you were proposing to put in a 300,000 gallon water fire, correct? Okay, and then it was published in the paper, okay? I have the RAM report, okay? You're lucky to have Mr. Coleman, he's a very good man. I have the RAM report that says that the facility, 400,000 gallon water facility, is adequate enough to put out fires in both buildings, which is good. But how do we get, was it revised from the 300,000 gallons to the 400,000 gallons? There's a difference of 100,000 gallons, okay? And with the RAM test that they did, they said if there was a fire, there's 200, they needed 290,000 gallons of water, that was the worst scenario, okay? So is it 300,000 gallons or 400,000 gallons? And which of it is, how did it get revised from the paper to where we're at now at 400,000? And to best my knowledge, that facility is not properly working right now, okay? It would discourage me because it's not working right. And there's nobody here in this room that say that it is, okay?
I can.
It must work, it's efficient?
Yeah, I'm the fire marshal, we tested every single one. We did a third, and we called, and I'm just a, I'm a third party guy, so myself, Alan, we went and tested every single building with the fire department, with the two brand new pumps that are there. We flowed water to every single building except for the R and D on the other side.
I'll interrupt you.
And we, and we paid to have a third party consultant review their numbers.
I'm not debating that, what on?
No, no, you said that your, your statement was that it's not working correctly. We tested every single building with the water flow from there.
I'd love to see that, engineer report that that was done. But, okay, what I, my issue is, how do we get from 100,000 gallon deficiency? Can anybody answer that question? How did that get through this? Thank you.
I have no idea. They designed it and found out they needed 400,000 gallons, so they put a 400,000 gallon tank in to create a buffer zone for themselves.
For clarification, sir, how did you get from 300,000 gallons that you have here, that you were proposing to do, it was in the paper, up to 400,000? Don't you think, how did, how did you get the variance to go another 100,000 gallons?
There's no variance needed.
Okay, there wasn't?
No.
So they just come up with that number?
The study, no one decided that. This has nothing to do with the height there. No.
Okay, no, wait, whoa, 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 whoa. I'm asking a question, as far as I'd like an answer, and how they got a proper?
So your question's being directed to a variance board. Your question should be directed to us in our office as the billing, people who issued the billing permit for that thing. So there was no, there was no variance for it.
I'll do that, thank you. Well, okay, that issue on this is wrong, this is a chemical plant, okay? And revised as a chemical plant, there's no scrubbers on that exhaust that's coming out of that plant right now. It is bad, I got the report, the gentleman did do a report, okay, when I requested it, okay? They never went up and get a report of the, the air that's coming out of there, okay? Exhaust is bad, it's like a motor chloride, it almost will kill you. And as far as building this, the 12 silos, the square footage, is that included in the 433,000 square feet? That's not, see, that's another question. There's a bunch of questions here that never been answered.
But the only thing this board can do is give them a variance or not for the height that they're asking for, for the silos, and if they can't determine what they do with this building, they can't talk about water capacity or fire capacity. All this board can do is say yes or no, you can build your building X high, and you can build your silos X high. That's, that's the only question before this board, so if we can keep our comments relevant to the height that they're requesting, that's the only this board can determine.
They got requested, they were shot down with the water thing, and they got it requested. They said Schluter's, if they're not allowed to put that in here, that they would move out of Plattsburgh. And that's a fact. And if I had to see a lawyer to have these people subpoenaed, to get rid of testimony, to?
That may be an issue, sir, I'm not debating it, but my point to you is, that issue is not in front of this board tonight, so they can't do anything about that.
Okay, and you're right, okay.
So if you have valid concerns about the height issue, that's what I wanted to talk about.
So the height of the silos, the 12 silos that we put in, the square footage, is that included in the 433,000 square foot?
No. No. Typically, your silos?
Now, is that going to be a, a working factory where they're going to make products, and most rooms are going to come out of that building? Or is it just going to be a warehouse?
It's going to be a warehouse.
It's, it's going to be a warehouse.
Okay, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to see my legal team, and I'm going to file for an injunction on this project, okay? Have a good day, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple questions myself, I'm in 8 Whispering Line. I had a question to Trevor, you're not here. I asked him over a month ago, how high was the silo on the west side? He said, I don't know. But I talked to the one that built it, it's 93 feet, seven feet under state requirement for a light on top. And they're going to do 12 near the airport? Come on! Now, you bring the pictures up, I didn't know they were going to use my roof to tractor trailer traffic. So what's the budget on Terranet Road all up? That was just a sand road going through there. My proposal here is to the board is to go look, have them, they got a great big truck parking out there, dip the corner of it out, put their own road, and save the, put their own road and save the taxpayer money, and they'll have to maintain it themselves.
That is actually?
You're talking 70 trucks or trailer a week when they got a building built.
That is actually something for the planning department, not, not us. We're the zoning, which would be just for the height of the building, that's all we're looking at.
Oh, you're looking at the height of the building.
So, so you were right, and addressing Trevor.
I put a gallon to at least the phonic, and I'm glad I did, because, so you'll be hearing from this lady, gentlemen. Good, thank you.
Anybody else like to speak, please step up to the mic.
One quick thing, in this planning, they never, the last beam that was here, Mr. Wood brought up about thermal and geothermal. Is any of that going to be incorporated into this?
You have no idea, because we're just doing the height of the building.
I think that it would be. I mean, as far as going with the height, it's wrong, it's wrong, it's a chemical plant. You'll be hearing from me, thank you, have a good night.
Captain Mister, Steve, can you do any, do you want to read in the?
I think somebody else wants to speak.
Okay. Come right up.
Yeah, Jonathan's side, Alan plus right above the bar right there, and across street from his place. I just didn't know if there's any other opportunity for storage in any of the Schluter system buildings that are out there already for any of this materials?
Any other opportunity for storage other than at that location? But it's all part of a process that they're going through.
I just, I totally understand, I'm just looking at the, the height here, it's what we're here for variance for. You're saying you can't go any further to the sides because of Jeff's doing this and the water tension, so I don't know if there's any other space for getting around to the campus for you to do this for the storage, that's all.
I, no.
So, I'm Kelly Porter, I'm Jonathan's fiance, and I am also on the city zoning board. I have a question directly for Aaron. This ask for this variance is significant. It is double what your zoning allows. The zoning is in place for specific reasons, for quality of life for the residents in that area. Just to put it on the record, Jonathan and I are big supporters of Schluter's. We do not begrudge their presence. However, their campus takes up already a significant amount of space in that area.
Yes.
They've installed multiple driving parking areas where they could have put silos, where they could have put storage instead of the parking, maybe kept the parking. I, I, I know this is kind of past, but the question directly for Aaron is, is there a potential for a Plan B where you're not asking for double the allowed height in a residential, more residential area than the rest of the campus? They're, they're kind of advancing out where there are a lot more homes than there are on that corner. You've got Casella, you know, you're over in a much more residential area, and you're asking for a significant increase in height over there.
That was directed for your experience.
I'll let you answer that.
Sir, I usually don't answer.
Can I go with you, Chairman, it's, can I ask you questions to the board?
No, I'm sorry.
We usually don't engage, we don't let them engage, because that turns into that, so it's for the board.
Okay, so I'm asking the board to please ask Aaron.
I, I think the, the process that Schluter is going through is a, is a one-stop facility where a product will come in, they all let it rest as they need to, and then manufacture the product, do the next step, put it into their storage area right there, so it can come in and stay in one location and allow, basically, I understand it.
And that's how I understood it as well. My question is, are there other options where this doesn't need to infringe so much on the quality of life for the residents in that area?
You keep bringing up the zoning, there's the zoning, that's all zone industrial. So it doesn't matter if there's a residential person living there or not, it is zone industrial now.
Because the zoning specifically says no more than 40 feet, and he's asking for twice.
Yep, and I'll, I'll tell you, it's stripped right now, that was an oversight on our part, it was supposed to be enough to 100 feet, but we forgot to get that in there.
Whether it was or not, still is what it is.
So the next time the zoning gets changed, it probably will get changed to 100 feet, because it's an industrial area. Commercial zones, we have a six-story hotels going on. That's, that's well at 10 feet, so the same thing for, it comes to industrial, industrial plants, industrial places always follow.
So as you said to them, this is about what it is now, not what's going to exist in the future, and what exists now is a regulation of 40 feet.
That will probably come down, so you should expect that, that the height is probably going to, I'm not going to say it's going to go 100, but that number was thrown out, but it'll probably definitely go up to at least 6, because that's what we have in commercial.
You mentioned the berm on the north side to make it better for the, the lights and stuff and sound coming out of the area where that is. Anything we done in the south part, in the west part, also where the housing is?
Do you believe there is some type of retaining wall on the south part?
That would be, that'd be a question to, I don't want to, not to this point.
The planning board is to keep opening up the door, we just talked about, so I.
I'm letting you know, what you're addressing is the height, not a berm, or not landscaping, nothing else. These guys are dealing with the height. The planning board is the one who deals with everything else.
Okay.
And you, you guys will get a chance to talk to them again, because they haven't met their detailed plan. Everybody's going to get a, a notice, and that's where you definitely bring in, hey, this is it, planning, you know? Okay, I can look at this.
Can I get a notice though, for the detail?
For the detail, and they don't get for, you didn't get a notice.
So I wanted to add statements to the zoning board, and I just would like it to be noted that we have a large investment in properties that are nearby. This is going to significantly impact their view. I know we're not the only ones here that are aware of this, and I just would like you to seriously consider what they're asking for and just explore the possibility of, of any other alternatives.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Your county made a statement, I believe? Are we on the?
The county did refer, we do go to county, county if, if, in December. If I may just address, you know, some of the?
If I may, just to address, you know, some of the comments brought up, you know, when you look at.
Alan, can I just go back to the voting now?
When you look at the location of this project and the building, it is in the most remote portion of the industrial zone. If you look at our landholdings in the wetland buffering, you know, we have 500, 600 feet to our west of the boundary line. So if you look at residences in the green-yellow zone to the west, you know, that is, you know, we are as far away from that as we possibly could. So we really tried to, you know, take into account where the residents are and put this in the most remote area to lessen any potential impact to the community. The only other option would be, obviously, to acquire more lands, but, you know, being part of the campus and part of the overall operations, moving it further away would just only increase traffic and movements, et cetera, which would potentially have a greater detriment on the community.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
And it was, I believe, 8-0. 9-0. 9-0. Yeah, went to the Clinton County Planning Board for 239, Henry Pearl, and was 9-0, Sharon Gardner. They did make, we had 9-0 in favor of the action. They did have for the, that was for the silos. This one is the referral 13223, December 7th. The Clinton County Planning Board at its December 6 meeting voted 9-0 to approve the referral with the following comments forwarded to the town for consideration, because this one's on Iris Sediment Road, access to or has the access point there, the county highway department will continue, because it's a, Iris Sediment Road's a county highway instead of the town highway, until you turn onto Pleasant Ridge. But they said, the county highway department will continue to work with the applicant to address potential issues presented by multiple driveways accessing the property and to propose alternatives. For example, consider changing one driveway to entrance only to address site distance potential turning issues into and out of a second driveway. So that was some of the, some of the issues with multiple parking lots, but that's in dress and heat dress. That's the only comments that we had from the county. Anybody else like to speak to this matter? If not, I will close the public hearing portion of the meeting and go to board members to see if anybody has any comments or questions, like they'd like to have addressed.
And remember, you're going to make, you're going to make two motions and two votes, one for the silos, one for the building.
Silo first, and go through the balancing test whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. And to store that much product, you need that much. Undesigned will change the neighborhood character for nearby properties. It is all industrial zones there, where the request is substantial, according to other variances that we have granted in the past, it is, excuse me, in line with those. And whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects, we don't see any of those. And if it was self-created, it would not necessarily negate us from granting the variance. So this would be for the 60-foot height of the, up to 12 silos. Anybody like to make a motion on that?
I'd first just like to say, I think, going back to whether it's significant or not doesn't have to do with the variances that were done in the past, but just to the variance as it stands, so it would be significant. So I don't want to just assume that we would all agree that it's not significant, because I'd see it as significant, whether it's 70% or 100% of our current variance as it stands, that's all. But I know also in the past, it's mainly the height variance for any building we've done in the past, whether it was there or was, I think on Casey Loop, was mainly for FAA regulations, issue or not, causing issues with flight issues. So if the FAA approved it, we never had a, an issue with the height.
Yes, no?
I make a motion, we.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I make a motion, we approve the, the height variance for the silos.
Okay, I second it. And show the hands.
More than 12 approved silos?
That's what I said.
Okay.
12. Does it show hands? And then roll call vote.
Henry Hales.
Yes.
Basal Alfar.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Malini Mark.
Yes.
All right, and then for the 80-foot section of the storage area of the main building, again, whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant in.
76?
No, no, corrected. So it's now going to be 80-foot in height, which is 40 feet higher than the maximum 40 feet.
And I assume that that's includes any protrusions through the roof as well?
Correct.
Because of the height. Honestly, all mechanical equipment be on the lower.
Vents and all the others.
Yeah. Other means feasible to the applicant, and with the storage and packing needs that they have nowadays with the automated systems, that is what would be required. Undesigned will change the neighborhood character, and again, it's all industrial. Whether the request is substantial, it can be said that it is somewhat substantial. And whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects, don't see any of those, and whether alleged difficulty is self-created, again, is, that's not necessarily negate us from granting the variance. Any board members have any questions or comments other than what I said? Apparently getting it on. So the motion be to grant, and you put your hands. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the, a variance of 80 feet.
I second, I second, got to show hands, and roll call vote.
Henry Hales.
Yes.
Basal Alfar.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Malini Mark.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, gentlemen. Good seeing you, CJ.
Oh, thanks.
Can I have a touch of your light?